Good evening. It's a little past seven o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have some visitors from Malawi, so I want to explain that we don't do that every meeting, but just after we've skipped a meeting. That's our city council rules. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, August 18th, 2014.
Approval. Second.
Motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Bill Brown. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't see any additions, so petitions and communications, John Dimmitt.
Urbana First Presbyterian Church is hosting a youth delegation from Zomba, the Zomba area, as part of our sister church relationship, which is parallel to your sister city relationship. And these four young men are here, arrived last Tuesday, the ninth, are trying to get used to the cold. I told them that we Americans are trying to get used to the cold as well. And they'll be here for two or three weeks. They're going to do a wide variety of activities, including today was the first day that a few of them shadowed some Urbana High School students and also some Champaign Central students. And we've got a wide variety of activities that they're going to be involved in, but they wanted an opportunity to speak to you. And this marks an opportunity where we're moving the sister city relationship to where it's not just a bunch of adults in the room, but we also have a multi-generational effort. So I'm going to ease back and sit back in the row and allow Brian to introduce themselves, and he has a few words to say. And then perhaps you might have some questions that you might want to ask them, or I think Dennis has a request that he's going to make at some point, so.
We bring greetings from the Zomba community. We are youths that have grown up in the city itself. We've been there since our childhood. We've been friends since kindergarten and stuff. We've been having a great time here in your city, in Urbana, and it's quite different from our city, certainly from the buildings, the roads. Everything is different, even the weather itself is so wonderful. So apart from just doing a wide variety of things that we are having on our agenda, I also want to pick out ideas on how to develop Zomba, a city that we are from. Thank you. Sitting beside me, my friend there, Hari Jatta. He is Lemex and Chilola. I am Brian Kabuba, and this is Elvis Gaisali. Thank you. Any questions?
Dennis?
Yeah. So hello and welcome indeed. I have been to the Jeans Church in Damascus a couple times, actually the first time with Presbyterian Church people, and helped do some well work. You guys have other talents. What do you do in the church particularly, and what's your most favorite thing to do in Zomba?
Mainly in Zomba, apart from doing school, we also do some music. As you can see, we have four of us here, we're a quartet. We haven't had any musical trainings, but God gave us talent to sing, and we sing in the church. So we are popularly known in the church by the name called Brothers, and we do sing. That's what we do in church.
And what's the chance of hearing a selection from your repertoire?
That can even be done right now, because as musicians, we move prepared. If you want a piece, we can deliver right away.
And you're going to be doing some singing here in town at various locations?
Yeah, we'll be doing that. We will be hosting, we'll be having a service on the 28th at the First Church of Presbyterian in Urbana, right here around town, and you will come to come. We will dish out a wide variety of things that happen in Malawi, and even the music, African talents and stuff. They'll be a lot of fun. Please join us.
And what do you think of the food that you've had so far?
The food is very different, is very different. We've been having a wide variety of food, so different from what we normally have, the sima and relish. Actually, John thought that the sima was kind of tasteless, but I now understand why, because we've been having different types of foods. I can't even name them, but I can eat them.
Okay.
Charlie?
Well, make sure that John Dimmitt takes you to a real football game. Even if it's the high school, but there is also the women's, University Women's Team is quite good, so quite entertaining. So make sure, make sure he takes you. And if he needs some help, he can, he knows where to find me. Okay, good.
Yeah, I guess it's your turn to present a song to us. Introduce it.
We'll do a very short piece. Amazing grace, how sweet that sound that saved a rich, a rich like me. I once was lost, but now I'm found. Was blind, but now I see. Amazing grace, how sweet that sound that saved a rich, a rich like me. I once was lost, but now I'm found. Was blind, but now I see. Da da da. La da la, da la. Da la da. La da la, da la. Da la da. La da la, da la. Was blind, but now I see. Da da da. La da la, da la. La da la, da la. La da la, da la. Was blind, but now I see. Thank you.
Standing ovation.
Thank you very much.
And it would, I wonder if you have a song in Chi Chiwa?
Oh, a song in Chi Chiwa?
Yeah, do you have one?
Okay, we can do it.
Okay.
The next song that we'll do, it's called Unejo. It's an African piece describing how the death of Jesus Christ benefited each one of us in this room. Thank you. So it's done in three languages, Chi Chiwa, Chiaw representing Damascus, that we come from, and English, which is the national language. Thank you. Unejo. 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 Hello, I'm Esther Pat, 706 South Kohler Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. Seven years ago, the city of Urbana condemned 36 rental units at 1507 East Washington Street, and as a consequence, a young mother with her one-year-old child became homeless. She had no money for a motel room, and she actually found another apartment, but she needed a deposit and a month's rent to move in. And her landlord, who owned the condemned property, would not give her back her deposit or refund her month's rent. And that is why she became homeless. The purpose of the relocation ordinance that you are considering tonight is to make sure that no one else ever becomes homeless again as a result of city condemning a property when the condemnation is the consequence of the landlord's failure to repair. Among the criticisms you've heard about this ordinance is that it doesn't address any outstanding claims the landlord might have against the tenant. And that is true, but neither does this ordinance address many outstanding claims a tenant would have against the landlord, including rebate of rent for the months that the value of the rental was diminished because of the landlord's failure to do repairs, the difference in rent between the replacement housing and the condemned unit, the cost of hotel or motel accommodations if it takes more than 14 days for the tenant to find another place to live, or even if they find it, just to be able to move in, the cost of storage of furniture and other belongings during the time that they're waiting to move into a new place, any property damage the tenant has suffered as a result of the landlord's failure to repair. In that regard, this ordinance is, definitely does not make the tenant whole. But what this ordinance does address is one issue, and that is the public safety issue that the city of Urbana has in getting people out of condemned property and not making them homeless. And to that extent, I think with the exception of that 14-day limitation on motel or hotel, this works very well. The ordinance provides a very short period of time for the landlord to pay the money, and that's because the tenants have a very short period of time to get out. If the window of time were actually larger, then the landlord would have more time to pay the money. Tonight's the fourth time in two months that you have considered this ordinance, and it's no surprise to me that you haven't seen a line of landlords here complaining about it or objecting to it. And that's because this ordinance will not affect most landlords. This ordinance will hardly ever affect anyone. I heard a statistic on the news tonight from Charlie Smythe that there have only been two condemnations in the last five years. And actually, there was one individual unit that also happened, so I think there were three, but we're talking about less often than once a year. When you deliberate about laws that affect all landlords, like rental registration, I understand why landlords who are good are concerned that whatever you're doing to try to zap the bad people will somehow affect them. This ordinance can't affect anyone except the owner of the property, whose property has been condemned because of the landlord's negligence in failing to maintain it. Another criticism, this, I mean this one, I'm sorry, I don't mean to obsess about it, but was the use of the word reasonable, that the use of the word reasonable is too vague. When I'm done speaking, I will just pass out to you a, some examples of the word reasonable from the, from the Urbana City Code. The examples I chose have to do with the property, with, well, with a business owner. Two are from the alcohol, liquors section, and one's from landlord and tenant, and about reasonable care being taken by the business owner to prove blah, blah, blah. And there, the word reasonable also is not defined. If you go through the state statutes and city code, you will find the word reasonable in all sorts of places. There is no ambiguity in this ordinance. I think it's, it's very minimal. It's a lot less, it provides a lot less than what is provided in at least three states and many cities throughout the country, but I think in most, if not all cases, it'll get the job done of preventing people from becoming homeless when they are forced to move because their landlord did not keep the place up to minimum cove for it to be fit for human habitation. I urge your adopting this without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Esther. Any questions? Okay. Dorothy Newman?
My name is Dorothy Newman. I live at 301 West Griggs, Urbana, Illinois. This is one of the properties that will be added to the 100-year floodplain, and I just want to request that the plan commission include in their report what the criteria were for adding and subtracting people from that floodplain.
Any questions? Thanks. Okay, thank you. Neil Malone?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, my name is Neil Malone. I'm here representing the Champaign County Association of Realtors. I first wanted to begin by actually thanking staff, has done a, there's been a great deal of work that has made this considerably better than, again, I'm sorry, I'm here on the rental, the tenant relocation ordinance as well, as you probably would have guessed. I wanted to thank staff. Libby and legal staff have done a great job in working with us in addressing some of our major concerns. As you know, we have been here several weeks in a row, and this is considerably more refined than the initial proposal had been. The initial proposal, as I think I indicated, was pretty broadly drafted. This does pare this down considerably as to the universe of folks who could be impacted. I would simply, there would be essentially two things that I would love to see added to this. One, I think Libby addressed, just as a matter of, a matter of procedure as to how the city handles these, that there is some mechanism for appealing or contesting whether this is the fault of the landlord. And I think that may be able to be taken care of through the actual kind of nation process. And then the second point I would make is just that there were, there's some reasonableness shown by city staff in that some things that would qualify a unit as uninhabitable, maybe something that may be able to be repaired in a very short frame of time. For example, if you have a ruptured water main, for example, that the property would then have no water supply, would therefore be uninhabitable by your code. If that's something that could be fixed in a day or so, where it makes less of, makes, makes more sense not to disturb the tenant household and move everybody around for the, you know, for the, for what would really be a fairly short-term inconvenience, I think there could be some flexibility drafted into it where it may just be that hotel room for the evening or the two nights rather than relocating to an entirely different building. So again, I want to applaud the staff for their willingness to work with us. And again, on any housing-related or real estate-related thing, we're actually happy to work with the staff before we even get to council and maybe work together and be able to present something that's amenable to every, to all parties. Questions?
Well, we appreciate your input. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay, we will move on. Unfinished business? I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with tonight. Reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole? Who was standing in the committee of the whole? Diane?
On behalf of the committee of the hall, I move ordinance number 2014-09-082, which is an ordinance authorizing an addendum to the mutual aid box alarm system agreement.
Second.
Okay. The motion by Marlin and seconded by Roberts, I believe? Oh, was it Madigan?
Whoever.
Madigan. Okay, sorry. Just I just heard somebody to my left, I wasn't looking. Okay. Any questions or comments? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move ordinance number 2014-08-080, which is the ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 12.5, to add a new Article IV and to amend Section 12.5-6, which is regarding relocation assistance for tenants.
Second.
Okay, motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any other discussion? Yes, Mike Madigan.
Yeah, I do have a couple of comments. I too want to -- I want to second what Neil said about the staff's willingness to incorporate some changes in this ordinance. And in fact, the changes were actually to add reasonable a little bit more to the ordinance. It wasn't a criticism of the word reasonable. It had nothing to do with that being ambiguous. I think we all understand what reasonable means, and that can be a case-by-case basis, whether it's a court deciding that, or whether it's staff, or whether it's some other adjudicatory body. So, there needed to be more reasonable in it, was my suggestion, just to make sure that everybody understands where I was coming from. I may not have been very eloquent, as usual, in talking about where I was coming from. But, you know, what we, in my opinion, are here to do is to make sure that the things we pass are fair. And that doesn't just mean fairness for the -- for one side of an issue. That means fairness for all sides. And I think that this -- the amending of this ordinance to this point has made it much more fair to all in the process by defining and actually not leaving open-ended some of the reimbursement issues and those types of things. I think that this still may end up being a work in progress, again, on both sides. But that's what we're here for, to put forth the best thing we can at this point in time and then see how it works. So, I do support this at this point. I think that -- I think that it's, in a way, a bit unfortunate that this couldn't have been done. Some of this couldn't have been done upfront, and I think we ought to take a lesson from that and maybe work on some of these things with all sides of the issue prior to it getting to the council level. There's nothing wrong, nothing unethical, nothing unlawful about that whatsoever, about allowing input from all sides. So, with that, I'll conclude.
Okay. Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Point of order. The next two ordinances have recommended changes from the legal department. Is -- are those consistent with staff, so we can move this with these amendments included?
They should be in what was passed out. I think what was on the web initially was not. But what you should have in your package should be the corrected versions.
I don't think we had that in our packet this week, did we? Well, anyway, I will move ordinance number 2014-09-083, which is an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 301 East Thompson Street, as amended per the recommendation from city legal staff.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Next up is ordinance number 2014-09-084, which is the ordinance authorizing sale of certain real estate, 303 East Thompson Street. I would move approval of that as amended per recommendations from city legal.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Next up is resolution number 2014-09-045R, resolution approving a community development block grant agreement with community elements for the Roundhouse Youth Shelter. For the committee, I so move.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Oh, sorry, didn't see you.
We're over here, too.
I know.
All right, I just want to say, as I have said before, on the social service funding issues, this has nothing to do -- my opposition has nothing to do with the fine work that these organizations do. I just don't agree that the city should be participating in funding these issues when core services are under as much pressure as they are these days, that the city is responsible to fund first and foremost before this. So, my opposition has nothing to do with the work they do and just about whether or not it's an appropriate function of the city.
Anyone else? Charlie?
I will simply counter that by saying that in a lot of these cases, these are very small amounts of money. They're used to go after additional funds for the poorest of the poor in our community, the most unfortunate, many times not through their own doing. And so, if we can leverage small amounts of city money to get additional money to our community, and that was noted in the letter we got from Woman's Place, now known as Courage Connection, that's exactly what they do with this. So, I think it's important that we support these small amounts of essentially seed money.
Carol?
I think also, I've been to these agencies numerous times, but just recently took a tour of Courage Connection, including the store. It would be a terrible city to live in where a city does not provide resources that agencies can use to help the community's members reclaim their lives. In many cases, especially Courage Connection, who works with victims of domestic violence, they couldn't do the work that they're doing, and they wouldn't be a great agency if the cities of Champaign and Urbana and Rantoul, in some cases, did not provide additional resources for them to use, to leverage, to even get community block grants that come through the city. So, it would be a terrible city to live in that doesn't provide this level of support for agencies, and I hope Urbana never turns into that kind of city.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move approval of resolution number 2014-09-046R, which is a resolution approving a community development block grant agreement for Courage Connection Domestic Violence Services, a woman's place.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Ammons. Any further discussion? Would the clerk?
Yep.
Oops, sorry.
Okay.
You're going to have to raise your hand faster, because I was looking down there. Go ahead.
All right. Again, I just have to reinforce, I'm not in any way trying to cast aspersions on what these groups are doing. And of course, I think city government should be compassionate. But what I also think city government should do should be to foster a better business climate that would take care of these issues without city assistance if there were more taxpayers, more businesses, more folks willing and able to support these causes in Urbana. So, I think ultimately, that's where we need to be, and that's what we need to think about when we are doing some of the things we do to businesses in this town, or when we don't necessarily foster the best economic development culture that we could. And that is a way to get to the level of funding that you need for the poorest of the poor without just continuing to take tax dollars from other core issues to do that.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2014-09-085, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year 2014-15. It's regarding the capital improvement donations for Arbor programs. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?
Yes. That motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move that we consider the next three ordinances in omnibus fashion. That's ordinance number 2014-0986, 87, and 88, all related to items coming from the Traffic Commission.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Madigan. Would the clerk please call the roll?
No, we have to vote on the omnibus first.
That's what I'm doing. You're voting on the omnibus.
Does that require a roll call?
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry.
For -- I believe going to an omnibus vote requires a roll call, correct, sir?
It's a recommended procedure because it has to be unanimous, so I would strongly recommend a roll call. So, on the record, we know that everybody approves.
We could argue about it, and it'll take more time. Please call the roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Do I get to vote on that?
Okay, now I move approval of ordinance number 2014-09-086, 09-087, and 09-088.
Second.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Madigan. Take these four ordinances together.
Three.
Three ordinances.
G, H, and I.
G, H, and I.
Oh, you're not doing J? Oh, no, that's separate.
That's a budget ordinance.
Sorry about that, I did not read that. Yes. Did you want to say something, Mr.?
I do. Two items, actually. On item H, the ordinance title, if you recall, at the last committee of the whole meeting, I passed out a revised ordinance, and the word establishing should be removing. And the revised ordinance was passed out at the meeting that evening, and that's the ordinance that you moved for approval that evening. So, the title on H should be the local traffic code, removing curb loading zones, not establishing. Please make that note.
Would you accept that?
I accept that eventually.
Okay.
And the second item is, there was a question about validation for parking lot 10A North, which is item I. I emailed to you all the changes. I passed out a paper copy just now. If there are any questions about that, Beth Beatty from the Finance Department is here also, and she and I will try to answer questions. But to my knowledge, there's been a fair amount of interaction and discussion between Lincoln Square Village Management and the various businesses within that area have discussed how a validation process could work out. So, per your request, the revised memo that I just passed out in paper copy now and emailed on Friday is an answer to those questions. Other than that, that's it.
Dennis?
And just for the public bill, if you're -- we're going to be using a different time rate for the metered lot, which is at the north end of Lincoln Square. That's the Lot 10, correct?
10A North, yes.
Right. So, there aren't going to be 15-minute meters anymore, they're just going to be two-hour meters?
There's no meters there now. It's two-hour free parking currently.
It's a metered -- this is the lot?
Where the post office drop box is immediately north of the Grand Impasta.
The drop box, okay.
Yes, that lot.
I got you. All right, I was thinking of the other one.
So, this does not change the language of the ordinance, this is just the implementation?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
All right. And as far as the parking just south of King Park and the Hammerhead, that has been a problem for quite a few years for the residents on the north part of Harvey Street. We don't really have a great solution, but we're going to hopefully work with the Park Department, Park Division. Are we still hoping to engage them in some kind of more permanent solution? Is the city involved in engaging them in that?
Yeah, I think there'll be continued discussion, but correctly, no parking any time, we feel, is the collective wisdom to help address all the concerns and needs up there. And if there is some physical change or improvement, City Council would be notified. But at this point, there are no physical expansion of parking or what have you in the park at this time.
So, whatever conversation happened, the Traffic Commission is the end of the advocacy that the city has made, and Michael, you were there, present, to place some parking in that park.
I think it's a financial, fiscal constraint with the Park District at this time. I don't see it near-term being a solution for them. So, yeah.
Okay. Carol?
I just have one question on the Lot 10A North. So, we're going to install actual meters?
Yes.
In this particular lot? How many actual meters are being installed there?
I may defer. Sixteen. And those are meters we have in stock, if you will.
We have them already.
We have them already, yes, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And last, for the committee of the whole, I move approval of ordinance number 2014-09-089, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance fiscal year 2014-15, which covers Windsor Road Construction Observation Staff Overtime.
Motion by Marlin, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor pressing?
Yes. That motion carries. Okay. Reports of special committees? Do you want to do a report?
Just want to mention that next week, Levi Dinkla from UC2B, or from ITV3, the UC2B agent for expansion of broadband, will be here with a presentation, and that'll sort of bring us up to date with where things are at.
Okay. Reports of officers. Next week, we will meet with our attorney on collective bargaining in executive session, which will start at 6:00. Any other reports of officers? Okay, we will move on to new business. There are two appointments that I would request. First, the Plan Commission, David Trail, for a term ending June 30th, 2017, and he's a new person that has not served before. I move approval? Motion by Marlin?
Second.
Seconded by Ammons. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And second, Sustainability Advisory Commission, Morgan Johnson, also new to a term ending June 30th, 2017.
I'll second.
Okay, that was Smythe and Ammons, sounded like, first two voices I heard. And is there an objection for Mr. Madigan?
Oh.
Okay. I did hear a voice here a little bit.
I was just saying second, but who cares?
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Finally, we have ordinance number 2014-09-090, an ordinance amending the boundaries of the Boneyard Creek Overlay District of the City of Urbana, Illinois. And Libby Tyler is here to discuss this.
And I'll be -- we'll be hearing from Kevin Garcia, our planner, too, who's been handling this case.
Good evening. So, this case is a request by the zoning administrator to adjust the boundaries of the Boneyard Creek Overlay District, specifically by adding 21 parcels and removing 50 parcels from the district. The Boneyard Creek District was an outgrowth of the 1978 Boneyard Creek Master Plan, and the original overlay district was officially amended into the Urbana zoning ordinance in 1979, and has not been changed since then. The overlay district is comprised of all properties that are wholly or partially within the Boneyard Creek's 100-year floodplain. And just as a refresher, the 100-year floodplain is the area that is susceptible to a flood that has a chance of 1 in 100 of happening each year, so that's a 1% chance each year. Properties within the Boneyard District are -- pardon me, are subject to land use regulations that are in addition to the requirements of the underlying zoning district, since it's an overlay district. And really, the additional regulations are to ensure that development proposed near the Boneyard Creek and its floodplain don't adversely affect neighboring properties. For instance, development that would increase stormwater runoff and increase chances of flooding. Since the 1960s, at least, there have been really excellent efforts by the cities of Urbana and Champaign to reduce flood hazards around the Boneyard Creek. And despite this, the most recent flood maps that were published by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, were from 1981. So, in a joint effort between the City of Urbana, Champaign, and University, a consultant was hired to remap the floodplain surrounding the Boneyard Creek, and new flood maps were just approved last October. Now, as a result of these new flood maps, you, the city council, put in your council goals for 2014 to 2017, specifically stated that staff should make any necessary modifications to the Boneyard Creek Overlay District. So, that's a major reason that we're here right now. As I mentioned, there have been some great efforts over the years, certainly some great planning efforts, starting with the 1978 Boneyard Creek Master Plan, as I said, out of which came this district. More recently, the 2008 Boneyard Creek Master Plan focused on the Boneyard, sort of in the downtown area, and really, the goal of that was to transform the Boneyard Creek from a highly urbanized drainage ditch into a destination for the local community. And I think we're all aware that if you go out there right now, you can see the finishing touches being put on that near $8 million section of parkland paths and such on the Boneyard from Grace Broadway. Now, the Boneyard Creek District, or Overlay District, specifically was designed to address the objectives of the '78 Boneyard Creek Master Plan, and it was designed to improve the cultural, economic, and environmental significance of the Boneyard Creek, to reduce flood hazards and mosquito populations, and to promote the creek as a recreational resource, and also to incentivize development while preserving property values in the area. So, in addition to the regulations that are required in the district, there are also bonus provisions that were drafted. There's six of those, I'll get to shortly, for properties in the district, so that property owners can still develop their land. As part of this process, we had an outreach meeting on August 12th, and we invited 120 property owners, residents, and such. And we had at least 13 residents or property owners, which we felt was a pretty good turnout. And we had two city council members attend that, and we had six staff members. And really, at the meeting, we just presented what the Boneyard Creek District was, the different -- the development regulations, and specifically the requirement for creekway permits in the district, and then we went through the bonus provisions that are available to property owners in the district. With respect to -- oh, sorry. The Plan Commission held a meeting on September 4th, and we fielded questions, or staff fielded questions, about FEMA's process of remapping the floodplain. questions, or staff fielded questions, about FEMA's process of remapping the floodplains, of which the staff didn't, we actually didn't provide, we didn't provide the process for that. That was what FEMA, or what the consultant, and then what FEMA agreed to. And we also discussed the process of remapping the Boneyard Creek District, which I'll get to shortly, the bonus provisions, flood insurance requirements, and property values. Now, at the Plan Commission meeting, there were a few property owners who were concerned with being added to the district. And I think there was some, I think perhaps we hadn't communicated, that the Boneyard Creek District is separate from flood insurance requirements. And really, so the FEMA maps are what determine if your, if your buildings on our property need to have flood insurance. And the Boneyard Creek District actually doesn't have anything to do with those flood insurance requirements. So just wanted to make that clear. At the Plan Commission meeting, they voted to recommend approval by a vote of three ayes and one nay. Very briefly, development regulations and then bonus provisions in the district, I'll discuss those right now. So really, the basic thing is that in the Boneyard Creek District, you need to apply for a creekway permit, which is, which is reviewed by our zoning administrator, our city engineer, and our Boneyard Creek Commissioner. And so that's if you're doing any sort of construction, demolition, excavation, things of that nature, you need to apply for that additional permit. And if you're not doing anything too major, and the zoning ordinance gets into the details of all this, but if you're not doing anything too major, that can be administratively approved in pretty short order. But if you're asking for, if you're asking to get several of the bonus provisions, or bigger yard setbacks and such, then it would need to go to the Plan Commission. As for the bonus provisions, there are six that are available within the district. These are a transfer of development rights, and you can actually, in the appendix, we put together some, put together some, Exhibit D shows some visuals of what these bonus provisions actually, actually say. But the first one is the development rights transfer. So you can transfer certain development rights, like the size of building you're allowed to build from, from an adjacent property to your property, if it's in, within the Boneyard District. You can get extra lot size for computation and things like floor area ratios and such. We can waive yard requirements in the district, and that's really done so that development can be pushed further back from the creek, so it's not encroaching in the creek area and causing flooding issues. You can also add up to one additional story onto a building as a bonus. If parking is required on your, for your building, as the underlying zoning says, if it's required, then you can provide that within 600 feet of your property. And then finally, last bonus provision is that mixed uses, mixed-use buildings can be allowed in the district. And also, no matter what the underlying zoning is, you can have residential uses within the Boneyard District. Now, onto the proposed changes, if you look at Exhibits A and B of your council memo, you can, you can follow along with some of the maps, and I think I'll pull those up here on this as well. Let's see. Okay, so really, the changes in the past, I guess 32 years between when the, when the flood insurance maps were, were created, so from 1981 to 2013, there were actually some pretty significant changes in the 100-year floodplain. And if you look on your maps, the yellow area is the area that was just the old floodplain, and that area is no longer within the floodplain. So you'll see areas, like the area, I guess southwest of, I guess Kohler and Western, where those meet, there's a lot of, a lot of that yellow area. So there's been a huge reduction in the floodplain over in that area. And then also, in the northeast, there have been some pretty decent size reductions as well. Overall, the floodplain reduced by over 50% in the City of Urbana along the Boneyard Creek, so that's pretty significant. And I think that's due to a lot of the engineering efforts of the City of Urbana and Champaign. So the area between, sort of between those areas, though, if you go from Kohler and Western East to about Race Street, you'll notice that there really haven't been too many changes in that area. There have actually been some minor expansions of the floodplain. And out of the 21 properties that we are proposing to add to the floodplain, 19 of those are within that area, from Kohler and Western East to Race. And if you look, Exhibit C actually shows a zoomed-in view on that area, because the larger maps are kind of, are a little harder to see. So in terms of redrawing the Boneyard Creek Overlay District, we, we really went with a simple approach and one that we felt was consistent with the, with the intent of the original drawing of the boundaries. So basically, what we did, we took the new FEMA floodplain data, and then any parcel that was touched by that floodplain in any way was added to the Boneyard Creek District. And if any formerly, if any former parcels that were, that were within the Boneyard Creek District were no longer touched by that floodplain, then we removed, or we're proposing those for removal. So it was, it was pretty basic, but like I said, we felt it was consistent, and it didn't need to be any more in-depth than that. As I mentioned before, there were some, some questions about flood insurance at the Plan Commission, so I just wanted to reiterate that the district, the Boneyard Creek District is in no way connected to flood insurance requirements. So an example that I, that I use, or a hypothetical example that's in the packet, is that you could have a property that's within the Boneyard Creek Overlay District because the floodplain touches those, that property line. You could have a building on that property that's well away from the floodplain, and so that building wouldn't be required to have flood insurance, but that property itself would still be within the Boneyard Creek District. And we feel that that's pretty consistent with the, with what the Boneyard Creek District is all about, because if you develop on your property, if you're next to the floodplain, development on your property can affect that floodplain and can affect flooding issues for your neighbors or for people downstream. So you should be within the district. But you should not be required to have flood insurance on your building if it's not in that, in that floodplain. And we, as, you know, we as staff and the City of Urbana have, we don't have anything to say about flood insurance requirements. That's a federal thing. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Very briefly, we feel that, I mentioned earlier that this, that the Boneyard Creek Overlay District meets at least one of the council and mayor goals for 2014 to 2017. We felt that it also meets a couple of other goals that are within your packets. Also, with respect to the 2005 comprehensive plan, we feel that the Boneyard Creek District and updating its boundaries really are in line with quite a few of the goals and objectives of that. It looks like, I don't know, at least eight or nine. So that concludes my report. The options that you have tonight with respect to Plan Case Number 2239-M-14 are to approve the boundaries of the Boneyard Creek Overlay District as presented. You could approve the proposed boundaries, now with specific changes, or you could deny the proposed boundaries of the Boneyard Creek Overlay District. And the Plan Commission, as I said, did recommend, by a vote of three to one, approval for the proposed boundaries, and we, as staff, concur with their determination. So I can take any questions you have now.
Bill Brown.
Yeah, thanks. I do have several questions. Since you ended with the maps, I'll start with the maps.
Yeah.
Last, the obvious one. There were several properties that were in the, in the old Boneyard Creek District boundary, or, yeah, in the boundary, but looked like they were never in the old floodplain. So there must have been some other criteria at the time besides whether the properties touched the floodplain. I noticed in our ordinance, one of the wheresses says proximity to Boneyard or in the floodplain. So maybe they were using proximity in addition to whether or not it was in the floodplain. Some examples of that is like where the Jolly Roger is, that I'm sure was never in any kind of floodplain. Then there's the whole blocks, the block between Western and Springfield, none of those were ever in the old floodplain. The Civic Center, looks like it was never in the old floodplain. And then we, the one, one of them that we're adding actually is the Corkscrew, which is a good 700 yards from the Boneyard. So I think we need to examine really what our priorities are for this district, and whether it makes sense to use this objective, the arbitrary criteria, to determine whether something should be in the district or not. I think we could come up with something more deliberate and purposeful. So I have another question, but if you wanted to answer that, if you know the answer.
Yeah, I mean, with, so with respect to the, the last point that you made, the Corkscrew property over, that's at Vine and Water, it's, I think that's got a pretty decent portion of it that's touched by the, the new floodplain. So I would, I would highly recommend keeping that one in, in any case. With respect to how they originally drew the boundaries and whether they used proximity, in the research that, that we've done, I think there was somewhat of a nebulous term that they included small properties in proximity to the Boneyard Creek. I think that was just about a verbatim recollection there. But I think they also, they were also using just parcel boundaries or street center lines, and, I mean, without knowing exactly what all of the parcels, what all of the parcel boundaries were at the time, I'm not sure, you know, if we could speak to every individual property. I think, I think that for the properties that we're removing, I think that a lot of those were sort of far, I mean, actually, some of those might be touching the floodplain. But, but yeah, still, there, there might be some that actually didn't touch the floodplain, and that might have just been done due to lack of technical, or lack of, lack of data, or just for purposes of smoothing out the boundary or something. But I can't speak to, you know, to every decision that was, that was made back then.
We might discuss that more later.
I think Libby, Libby might want to weigh in.
Well, we, we are replacing this overlay district using a rational method, which isn't splitting lots and only including lots with just one or two exceptions that have a portion of a floodplain within them. And the reasoning is that this is an overlay district, it imposes additional requirements on the underlying property. So we wanted to be conservative in its application. This is a map change, not a text change. So we didn't get into all the different regulations that come into play in the Boneyard Creek Overlay District. It could be back in the 70s that they thought that there were some benefits to being in the district with the transferred development rights, but we're really looking at it as a mechanism to ensure for the improvement of the Boneyard and the safety of adjacent properties. And again, the rational method being where the floodplain actually is now with the remapping and not splitting parcels. So we did do quite a bit of research to try to understand what the thinking was back in the past generation.
Yeah, I, I looked at the 1978 plan. I was amazed that it's holding up as well as it is actually for being a 30-some-year-old plan. But I, I, you know, I think we can come up with better criteria. So my other question, I'm sure there'll be others about how much this has been used and stuff, but can you talk a little bit more about the responsibilities of property owner if they're in, in the district as far as how much does it cost for the permit? You know, what do they have to do to get the permit if they're, if they're doing, if they're gonna get a bonus provision? What do they have to give up for that?
Yeah, with respect, Libby, I'm not sure if you know how much that permit costs. We'll, we'll check into that real quick. But yeah, it's, so if you want to do any, basically any sort of development, that's going to be, say, adding on to your structure or building, building new, you're going to have to get a creekway permit. And that can be, if you're not doing anything that goes beyond the criteria that are set forth in that section of the zoning ordinance, and we can pull that criteria if you want to get down into the nitty-gritty details of it. But if, if you're not doing anything that's, that's a really big project, let's just say for lack of a really technical term, you'll need to get approved through the Plan Commission. But otherwise, there's administrative approval, so zoning administrator, so Libby, and then Bill Gray, the city engineer, and then Clark Bullard, our creekway commissioner, pardon me, would just review that, and I think that could be approved within a matter of a week or a week and a half. So I don't, I don't know if it's terribly onerous on the property owner.
And then the second part about the bonus provisions, which they have to give up for that?
Well, and here's where we, we, as staff, we've actually talked about maybe needing to update this part of the zoning ordinance, because initially, the bonus provisions were sort of a, the way that we, that we read that part of the ordinance is that they were sort of a, an incentive for property owners to grant easements to the city so that the city could build a recreational path along the Boneyard Creek District. Since 1979, there have been, there's been legisla, legislation that says cities can't really do that type of thing. So I think initially, the bonus provisions were there sort of as a trade-off. So you can develop your property more, but you have to grant us something as well. So I, I do think that we, we might want to look at, at that part of it.
Can I add? So the permit is $125. The creekway conferences, and this is all outlined in the zoning ordinance, is really a technical review with our engineer and our creek commissioner, and it's to, again, protect the floodway and make sure that there's Illinois Department of Natural Resource review as well. So it's, when you're in this overlay district, we're providing this extra layer of review. And it's an overlay, we didn't want to overdraw it. This is a big reduction in the overlay district, this remapping. The other point I would make with regard to the bonuses, they have in fact encouraged developments to pull back from the Boneyard. And that's a, that's a benefit, even if we haven't succeeded in having the pathways built or some of the other amenities that the original Boneyard Creek Master Plan envisioned. At least it's helped incentivize buildings to pull back. And it's provide, provided some offset for somewhat of the burden that you have to be in a floodplain by allowing for a little higher development right. So I think that this remapping continues those positives in protecting the Boneyard and providing a little bit of additional zoning benefits for properties that have this extra burden of the regulation.
Diane?
Could, could, could you repeat what you just said about the state not allowing bonus provisions to be used as incentives?
Well, okay, so there, there were a couple of important planning cases that went to the Supreme Court back in the, I think, early to mid 90s. And one of them, one of them specifically dealt with a city requiring a property owner to dedicate a portion of their property for a path easement. And that, I mean, to me, that is directly what we were asking people to do in this zoning ordinance, in this part of the zoning ordinance. We haven't done that in practice, which is probably a good thing. But the way it's, the way it's written, you're not allowed to get that, you're not allowed as a condition to... to, a property owner getting a permit or something, you're not allowed to condition that by saying you have to grant us a path easement. Did that answer your question, or?
It was an extraction that they were required to build a pathway, and that was deemed to be a takings, regulatory takings.
But the city currently asks for an easement along the Boneyard in exchange for bonus provisions today, correct?
Well, I think there's a difference between dedicating right away and building something versus like a maintenance easement or something of that nature, I think that that's still a safe approach.
So what is the city getting exactly in exchange for bonus provisions?
I think that, again, we're getting more space along the Boneyard.
Is it, it's an easement then?
Well, if you're thinking of the same case, there is an easement, if you're thinking of the same instance, but that's not always, not always the case, each one is different.
I guess I'll follow up.
Carol Ammons was next, and then Dennis.
I just wanted to follow up on the federal requirements of flood insurance if you're designated in a floodplain, and I wondered if legal had, or if there was any communication between CD and legal on the, on the matter, or if this came up in the public hearings. My understanding under the flood insurance is that if you're in a designated or high-risk area and your mortgage is held by federally regulated or insured lender, they can require you to have flood insurance just because you're designated in that area? And I'm not sure how many of these properties would be impacted by that, or, and if this came up specifically at the public hearings.
Well, there were, there were some questions, and I think, as I said, that was probably more due to lack of explaining what the district is versus what the, the floodplain is. So I think there were some questions at the Plan Commission about that. But with respect to, to flood insurance requirements, I think you've got it right. And there's really, and there's nothing that we can do as a city, and there's nothing that the Boneyard Creek Overlay District does that affects if your, if your building is going to require flood insurance.
I understand, I guess when you add 50 houses, I wonder if those 50 people had a real opportunity to understand what this means, and it may be a requirement for them. I, I don't know what their mortgage issue might be, but it may actually turn out to be a requirement for them, and they may not have been able to make the meeting that you had, and I don't know if enough information has been given to them for that consideration. So that's, that's a concern for me.
Well, the, just a couple of points of clarification, we're proposing to, to remove 50 properties and then to add 21 properties.
21 new properties?
Yes.
Remove 50 and add 21.
Yeah. And then with respect to the, the floodplain, you know, the, the floodplain is a, it was, it's, it's approved by FEMA, so we don't have any say on the floodplain. So what we, when we're adding properties to the district, that's not saying that they're going to require flood insurance, because the district is separate from the floodplain. So if, if your building is touched by the floodplain, you're going to be required to have flood insurance. If your building is, or if your property is being added to the district, that says nothing about whether your building is going to need flood insurance.
Can you clarify which of these maps represent the district and which represents the plain?
Yeah, so the first, so Exhibit A shows the floodplain. Exhibit B shows the, the proposed boundaries, and then it's got some little dots and hashes on it. The dots show properties that would be removed from the Boneyard Creek District as proposed, and then the, the diagonal hashing areas are the, are the properties that would be added to the district. And then the, yeah, the district itself is just that big blue thing.
It looks like our expert on stormwater would like to say something. Bill Gray, did you want to say something?
Just to clarify a little bit going into how the floodplain, the new floodplain was determined, and why these changes, why the map changes that are being presented this evening is, there was a lot more data gathered, cross-sections of the creek, elevations of properties, et cetera. The determination of the floodplain was done much more accurately now than it was 35, 40 years ago. Secondly, the floodplain is much more accurate in reflecting all the changes and improvements that have occurred on campus and in Champaign, and what we have done also. So, I, I think what community development is doing here, not I think, what, what community development is doing here is merely reflecting the entire parcel that is being touched by the FEMA-approved floodplain, and including that as a new district, which is appropriate. So that this is information that if there's going to be an addition to a garage, or a tear-down, or rebuild, or whatever may happen that occurs with these parcels that are so identified in this district, then there will be certain criteria, as Kevin and Libby have talked about, we'll have to follow through with. And it's for their protection and our protection. We need to protect so that we don't increase flooding upstream, downstream, across the stream, hence we have floodplain requirements, but it also allows development to occur within certain parameters, certain guidelines, and this is defining that district so that people know. And actually, before the floodplain map was approved, we also had another public information meeting, to your point here, Councilmember Ammons, had a pretty good turnout at the Civic Center, I'd have to pull up the date, but this is before FEMA approved it, it was like, here is the proposed map, your home or property may be out of the floodplain or it will be in the floodplain. I remember people coming and having the joy or the sadness of one or the other, if you will, you know? And again, most people who have properties there don't really plan to change their homes or businesses, you know, so it's kind of a no harm, no foul situation. But where there is a tear-down or a rebuild or something that occurs, then yeah, they have to go to the Boneyard Creek Commission, Libby and I and Commissioner Bullard are there to talk about it, and it's, again, it's pretty standard procedure, what we go through, what we look for. And again, it's to protect that floodplain, particularly the floodway, so that we have good conveyance of water. We've had a lot of tests this year, we've had some really significant storms, and we're doing well. I mean, Urbana's doing well, Campus is doing well, and the city of Champaign is doing well with the millions of dollars that have been spent to deal with these inundations. I can assure you that had nothing been done, Fourth and Green and a couple of current events would have been three, four, five feet of water. And today, we have high-rises being built because that protection's in place, so. Anyway, this is just a, a real good clarification of what properties are now in the new floodplain that was approved by FEMA, which incidentally, the technical detail was developed locally by the USGS Water Division staff, members who have the expertise to do this, and came up with a new methodology and criteria and software to help the industry in, in remapping other areas that may want to be remapped. So we kind of were a trendsetter, if you will, and this information is being shared in other regions or for, with consultants or other communities to better map floodplains. So we're a leader in trying to do the very best we can. So this is a very intensely studied, cross-sectioned, evaluated creek, if you will, and this is the very best information that's out there.
Thank you. Bill, you have another question?
I have a question for Bill. Not too long ago, we approved the building code that related to floodplanes, isn't that right? And we, we approved an amendment to our building code that basically incorporated national standards on building in floodplanes. So, I guess my question is, doesn't that already handle as far as encroaching in the floodplain that might affect other people's rights not to be flooded, that, you know, the type of building concerns you were talking about, doesn't, isn't that already in our building code?
The building code would reference, you know, what FEMA requirements are for floodproofing, flood protection, that sort of thing, if that's what you're referring to. Those codes have been in place in practice for some time, yes. So, again, it's for the property owner's protection, again, think about it, if FEMA is providing flood insurance for properties, you know, they don't want to insure, I mean, if you're an insurer, you don't want to insure something that's going to be vulnerable, you know, so you want to have the right elevations, if there's basements, there's got, you know, there's got to be certain flood protections and proofing, it's, it's very detailed and involved if you want to do certain things versus look at other options, but, yes, there are building codes, if you will, or ways you build the structures to prevent them from being inundated.
This is more the zoning level, just like the building codes for the buildings, this is the broader level, the broader scope?
I, I think Dennis had a question or comment.
Yeah, yeah, actually, our conversation has brought up a different one as well, well, which I will go to now, and if, and it has to do with whatever the definition of an easement the city has along the creek in this western section. Is it the same easement that the city has throughout the entire length of the creek in the city of Urbana?
The Boneyard Creek, yes, we have easements that we obtained from the sanitary district back in 1992, when the sanitary district, if you will, relinquished ownership, maintenance responsibilities, care for the Boneyard, and it was transferred to the cities, and this, I'll spare all the other details, that agreement, that was a significant agreement. In that tra- in that agreement though, we obtained, we have now the maintenance easements along the Boneyard, and for us, yes, those were necessary and were obtained back in the sixties to maintain the sheet piling and the fencing and, and to remove any, you know, obstructions and that sort of thing. So I believe it's more or less 25 feet from the center line of the Boneyard, we have access on properties, but now keep in mind that access is to maintain the sheet piling, the fencing, remove obstructions, trees, what have you. It's not an easement that grants a pathway, for example, it's a very specific easement that's granted to us. So we couldn't necessarily use that easement, say, oh, we have an easement to put in a trail system. That wasn't what was granted.
And yet, we've done that very thing in the beautification plan of the Boneyard.
How so?
Can I just want to interject back to Diane's comment? I mean, I think it's one thing to have easements for maintenance or access or things of this nature to grant easements in exchange for setbacks, it's something else entirely in this case out west, where a city required that something be built in exchange for like a building permit or a zoning permit.
Well, that's a tit for tat, and we're not talking about that.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so, right, so then, I mean, obviously, we're using apparently our easements to do the beautification plan, or is this, has the, the Boneyard Beautification Plan in all its various phases been possible for the city of Urbana to plan and, to plan upon based on the ownership of the, of the creek and the easements that the city has to replace sheet piling or whatever, because we're looking at sheet piling that's no longer being useful to us? So we're going to be potentially reconstructing some of the perimeter barriers and defining mechanical aspects of the Boneyard. And so, in that replacement process, we're able to redesign and reconfigure the Boneyard to accommodate maybe modern uses? And this is how we're able to beautify the creek, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, all right, so it's possible then to imagine that this kind of reconstruction will happen to the west eventually because we do have contained and sheet, what is it, sheet piled or, we have contained, we have the channel contained in the very same manner as we do in the center section. All right, so we do, so it does, so we do have, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is that we do have an option, there are mechanical reasons which would allow us to reconfigure the, the look of the Boneyard Creek within the easement.
There is.
Okay.
With discussion, you know, with property owners and
Sure.
And acquiring necessary additional easements or purchasing property.
Yeah, which is what the process the city goes through when it's looking for easements to build a new road or to widen a road
Yes.
To three lanes rather than two.
Mm-hmm.
And we've done that on Florida Avenue and such.
Yes.
Okay, so there are, there is a, I want to just establish, there is a process that we have that could allow future, future redesign of parts of the creek.
Yes.
Okay, sure. Then I, the other question I have has to do with proposal, what is it? What are these things called? They're called, well, item number one, bonus points, not points, but bonus provisions, a number one. How, tell me about the process in which a building is able to add square footage to itself in the district by seeking, what, unused square footage from other adjacent properties? This to me sounds very fishy, and I'm kind of trying to understand how we can take, especially properties that maybe are not owned by the owner who wants to develop, and also, these are not even in the Boneyard Creek District itself, these are other outside properties. So what, what is the condition that allows a person to seek additional square footage by trading off?
So it's, it's a, a transfer of development rights, it's a, I mean, it's not terribly common in planning, but it's, it's relatively common. And basically, you are allowed to enter into an agreement just with, with a transfer, a transforer and a transferee, you're just able to enter into an agreement that says you have, like you said, you have unused development rights, and I would like those, and then you're allowed to transfer them, usually there's going to be some monetary compensation, but it's, it's a tool that's in place and it's in the Boneyard Creek Overlay District rules, so it's, it's allowed if you, I mean, there are specifics to it, they have to be adjacent and contiguous, so you could transfer, like in this example that I showed in, in Exhibit D.
Right.
You could potentially get development rights from a couple of adjacent properties, but yes, you're allowed to, to build using their development rights, but then they waive those rights forever.
And so, and so these are buildings that haven't built out to the setback or other such, so that they're, they do have potential expansion property, possibility, but they're not going to be using them now because they're going to sell them to somebody else?
True, yeah, that's correct.
And then that's permanent?
Yes.
So, so if, if anybody purchased a house in the future, they would still be prohibited from doing that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's one, that's one provision that I really don't like, and I'd like to see it removed.
It hasn't really been used, frankly.
Well, there you go, let's take that one right out of there.
Thirty years.
If it hasn't been used, and it doesn't sound good to me, I think we should remove it.
Okay, Charlie?
Starting with the bonus provisions, and I'll go and reverse what I was thinking here, the bonus provisions aren't ready for prime time, from the sounds of it.
Remember, we're changing the map, not the district, and the district's been in place, it's complicated, and it's not the way we would do it today, but it's been in place for decades, and it's actually worked very well because we review any development that happens within the district, and there's some, some flexibility that's offered because it is a bit of a burden to be in the floodplain, to be in the district.
Why would it be a burden?
And it's, it's reviewed
Let's sit one at a time, okay?
It's, it's reviewed at the staff level, at this technical level, and it provides that extra layer of oversight. And we did just have a hearing a few, or a meeting a few weeks ago on the mosque annex on Western, that's one that went through the Plan Commission and had a hearing and was granted a permit, now that's expired, so it'll be coming back, and that's probably the most significant building that's ever gone through Boneyard Creek hearing process. So, it, it's interesting, you know, all these bells and whistles were added back in the seventies when this was added to the zoning ordinance, but in practice, it's a very simple process of taking a process of taking a special review for the flood impact of the development, referring to the planning commission, letting the planning commission know, and just taking an extra review, but, um,
Yeah, okay.
I guess it's a little bit baroque, maybe, and, and today, we would do something more streamlined.
Okay.
If I could finish my
Go ahead, go ahead.
I had a whole series of things I wanted to get into here.
Did you want to respond to that particular thing? You want to let Bill Gray respond to that part?
Libby mentioned that we've not had too many opportunities to look at the bonus provisions. Well, first of all, at least in the last twenty years, admittedly, there hasn't been a lot of redevelopment that has occurred along the Boneyard Creek, particularly from downtown west to Lincoln Avenue, but here we are literally on the cusp of Boneyard improvements, downtown beautification, we're getting a little bit of excitement based on that, and wouldn't it be nice that we have some redevelopment occurring somewhere from Grig Street over to Broadway or Vine or what have you, in some areas that have some opportunities, and we have a development, a developer comes in and maybe could use those bonus provisions for a more spectacular type of redevelopment? I think it would be short sighted at this juncture to just tonight say, nope, we're going to get rid of it right now, they're there to allow for certain types of development to occur where maybe under development, some areas could allow a bigger, better situation. So I think we need to think that through a little bit, because downtown is, I think, where bonus provisions could be an asset for possible development.
And that brings me right to one of the points I wanted to make here, which is, I think we've got, we're mixing apples with oranges here. We have two kinds of sort of general underlying zonings here, we have a residential area and we have a business area, and I think we, and you know, when we get into the criteria that, 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 you know, you've got this nice, simple criteria, but it might be inappropriate to use for residential versus business. And so, I can see Bill's point, and, and in that, in that B two, B three, B four areas, the bonus provisions probably very appropriate, probably need to be fine tuned and, and, and looked at, and, and they work there. In a residential area, and in particular, I just, I'll, I'll pick the one that just stands out here, why would you want to mess with the five hundred west block of Main Street? You know, here you've got mostly older homes, sort of historic district type material, and you're putting houses into this overlay district that weren't in there even when the floodplain was more in their backyards than it is now. So, you know, to me, the criteria really needs to be, you need to make a distinction, and I, I'm looking at the map, and I, I immediately picked out a property that's in the, in the business district that is not touched by blue in any way, and that's the, if you look on North Race Street, the second property from the top, along Race Street is inside the border, it used to be in the floodplain, it was half yellow, it is not touched in any way by blue at this point, and yet it's still in the district, it hasn't been removed. If you want to move your mouse, it's
Yeah.
You see it?
Yeah, I see what you're talking about.
You see it there?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's an example, and it may very well be that we want to use a business development criteria for that property and include it in the overlay district because it is a potential, it's probably tied in with the property next to it, I think there probably, there's a strip mall there, and, and that property is probably tied into the property immediately to its, to its east, so it would make sense to keep them together. So I would like to see, okay, and then, so I counted up the number of houses here that are just barely touched by the new floodplain, and there are twelve or thirteen of them that you've put in here, that touching could be as simple as basically touching the curb at the front of the house on their right of way, and, you know, so I don't know if these, these property lines represent actual property that people own, or their property plus the right of way, there's always, you know, do you really own that spot, you know, do you really own the sidewalk out to the street issue here, so, you know, including people, including residences where they're just barely touched, just for the potential that they might do something that would have an effect, I, I think could be caught in other parts of our permitting process without charging an additional hundred twenty-five to, to, to put people in a technical review that they just really don't need, it's really not applicable. So I think there are too many houses here in the residential part that are included, and so, and I think a more elaborate criteria might exclude them, just because they're being touched by, in, 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 you know, less than five percent or ten percent might be, might be a reason to exclude them from the, from the, from the area. So I think the combination of things here, of sort of being ready, sort of not being ready, the questions that we have, I really would prefer to send this to committee and keep a discussion going, so I'd move to send this to committee.
Okay, but can I interject?
Okay, let, we have a motion made here.
And I second it.
A motion by Charlie Smythe to send this to committee, seconded by Carol Ammons.
And I guess Libby has a point that I would say.
A legal point, yes, it can go to a committee, but if we begin, this is a zoning case, so it needs public hearings, we just had hearings on the map, so you talk about the designation for the, the mapping, I think that's fair game, but if it's the underlying regulations, those have not been noticed at all, so I didn't know exactly what you were going to be sending back to committee.
Yeah, well, it's the criteria for including and not excluding that I think, and I, I think a more, a more elaborate criteria needs to be developed, and I think you need to separate out the business district from the residential district.
The second one would definitely not have been included, because that's regulatory.
So when you make your criteria, you didn't
And bonuses, is that what you're talking about?
No, 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 the cri, I, I think you have two different criteria, depending on whether they're an underlying B three, B four zoning or a residential zoning. So I see a lot of residential on the left, and I see business on the right, and you've, you know, for example, this property that I've mentioned, you've included in the, you've made a decision here and included a property that is not touched by the, by blue in any way as part of the district, other things, there are residential areas, the five hundred block, for example, that's just barely touched, was more touched in the past and is now in when it wasn't in the past, and I, I would much prefer not, you know, I think the simplest, the fewer people, the fewer residences we have in this, the better off we'll be.
The, we might still have to go back and renotice because we're dealing with people's basic property rights, so if we, we'll, we'll consider, we'll consider this, I think if we are reducing, we're probably okay, but if we're adding, then we might need to go back and renotice with the planning commission, but if it's a reduction, I think we're still, we're still okay with our, our legal notice.
But what we're doing right now is just keeping it in committee.
So we can
Sending it to committee, it hasn't been to committee. Bill Brown?
I could support that, I think another option would be just to exclude the paragraph that removes properties, or that adds properties, I think the second paragraph, so just don't add anything, pass it as is, to remove the ones that were determined to be removed, and then as we go through the criteria, actually, at that point, I think we'd have time to actually come up with a, I think the, the criteria for selecting the properties has to kind of tie in with the plan for what we want to do there, I mean, I, I think it's great that we're looking at this, I think we definitely need to come up with something that's going to work and that we can, we can use to, to plan where, if we need, if we need flood control, I don't even see any flood control we've done, really, maybe it's all underground. I know we have one big detention pond at Vine Street, the Viaduct, but that's only temporary, and that seems to be working pretty good, but it, there is probably a low spot, you know, around Springfield Avenue where at some point we'd want some detention, and that makes sense for those in the floodplain to be included because it's lower and it's less costly to make detention, so things like that make sense, but I'd be, if, if we don't want to send it all back to committee, I'd be okay with just subtracting properties and not adding anything new tonight, so that we can get this case through, and then maybe start another one to look at this more holistically as far as how we want to determine what properties and what we, and what our plan is for those, for those areas.
Diane?
Well, at the risk of complicating this further, I, I had one general policy concern, and that was the, the fact that the overlay district and all the attending variances associated with it and that, that sort of thing are, are based on the fact that it's supposed to support the implementation of the Boneyard Creek Master Plan, which is thirty-six years old, and it was passed in nineteen seventy-eight, we updated a section of it in two thousand eight, which is the downtown portion, and that's actually being implemented, but as far as the rest of the master plan, we're looking at the nineteen seventy-eight version, and if you look at that plan and look at what's on the ground now, a lot has changed in Urbana, in Champaign, and on campus since nineteen seventy-eight, and in some cases, you know, they've added more flood control, which has been a great improvement, amenities like Scott Park and that sort of thing, our downtown section is great, but on the other hand, we've, the city of Urbana has also allowed development that has pretty much shut the door on actually implementing part of our master plan for the Boneyard Creek, probably the most significant is that Gateway Park that was supposed to be on, on Lincoln Avenue, that has since been developed, and that no longer is an option, and there's development elsewhere along there. So my, my, and if you look at the nineteen seventy-eight plan, you see it alludes to things like creating super blocks along the Boneyard, and I'm assuming that means blocks containing the buildings that are extra tall, extra large, extra dense, maybe commercial, residential mixed, I'm not sure what a super block was in their vision, but is a super block consistent with what the city wants today or what the neighborhood wants today? And, and there are, you know, a lot has changed in thirty-six years, so I guess I would feel more comfortable if, and I understand the rationale behind this re, remapping, and that's, that's fine, I just would feel better to me if, if we were to pass this, that it would be on the condition that we also update the nineteen seventy-eight portion of the master plan, so that it reflects today's reality.
Okay, sorry. Libby?
I think that these are worthy goals, to update the plan, I agree, it's out of date, and we haven't done what we thought we would, update the district regulations, TDR, if that hasn't worked, you know, the bonuses, those are, those are good goals, that's not what we've worked on to this date, what we were trying to do was to get our district to conform to the most recent firm, so we can fine tune that, I, I wouldn't advise just doing half the job and taking out those who are out and not adding those who are in, I think that that's going to lead to trouble, I think we should do our best with what we have now, which is to match our Boneyard Creek to the firm, I think that would be responsible, if we don't do that, then we're leaving some people out hanging for some number of months while we complete these other two projects, which would be relooking at the Boneyard Creek Regulatory District, and that would be, I'm sure this took months and months to put into place, and we would want to do a good job. To do a new master plan for the portion of Boneyard Creek that isn't covered would be a very big, worthy undertaking, we've talked about, well, how would that be funded? Well, maybe the stormwater management fee would be a funding mechanism, because it doesn't lie within a funding area like in the downtown. So I think that what's come up, there's three things, there's the map, trying to get our map conformed, and that's what we noticed and talked to people about, there's the regulatory portion, and we've had some discussion about that, but that wasn't part of our hearing, and then there's the planning portion. So I guess I would, I would urge completing some rational, minimal approach here to the mapping, and then we'll look at feeding in the other two elements as, as we have time, and probably doing the plan first, then the regulatory, but that would be a big undertaking to get the rest of the Boneyard Creek to have a really nice master plan, the way the downtown does.
Carol?
Thank you, Libby, I'm, I'm not exactly sure why we didn't get this portion in committee first, because what Charlie's pointing out and what we talked about earlier is how we got fifty out, twenty-one in, right, right, I'm saying how the determination of the properties were made, and, and I don't understand your explanation, it's not your fault. So I, I support Charlie's recommendation to staff to send this back to committee, so that some of that can be answered only in relationship to the, the map and the district, and you can always come back to the other portions that were raised here tonight by other council members, but for the purpose of getting the map done, that motion, and seconded, was in relationship strictly to the map and district.
Dennis?
Oh, yeah, I, yes, I don't, I, I could see potentially that there's a lot of thought that might go forward in reimagining the, the full length of the Boneyard, and I think Councilman Marlin had good points about that, I agree that, you know, a, a plan that was drafted in the seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-eight is going to be unnecessary to Since we're talking about, you know, concept here, as well as factual, you know, district boundary lines based on federal flood regulations, to, to use some more, just to put into the mix a little bit more of the concept, some of the buildings that are being built or proposed along the potential development area of, of the creek, which comes under the purview of this district, have the options of being a mixed residential and office, and also three or four stories high, in other words, longer, higher than typical residential development, and I don't see any problem with allowing those kinds of constructions, as, as Director of Public Works Bill Gray said, we have the option here of seeing new and original kinds of structures being built along the Boneyard Creek, the creek is itself an amenity of the city, and if you built a five-story office building and along the creek, who wouldn't want to have a window facing the creek, you know, to work from? It would be an amenity, that would be a delightful thing, which isn't common in our area. So if we're going to see, and we're going to promote mixed office and residential uses in high-rise or more urban area settings, can we also have a discussion then about using the, the MOR design guideline overlay for the Boneyard Creek Development Corridor? It would make sense because the, the MOR design guidelines, which were drafted to encourage future building along Green Street as a potential residential business office corridor, which we haven't really seen occur, except for like in a few single instances, was a very fine plan for suggesting, but not demanding thoughtful design practice which enhances the community and ties design and design elements to existing and expected ratios and proportions, and I think it would be a useful thing to consider expanding the MOR or giving it a new life in this district as well, to encourage beautification along the Boneyard as well as development, and I think that's something that, you know, we could add to without great distress to any developer, because it merely encourages thoughtful development and aesthetic, aesthetic decisions, but it's not mandatory.
It does have, it does, I'm sorry. Yeah, I think we have a motion, which is to send this back to committee, motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons, any more comments on that? Libby, you want to say something else?
Well, I did want to respond to Dennis's suggestion, on the MOR was really tailored to Green and Elm Streets, as a transition between downtown and the campus, came out of the downtown to campus plan, we have two other areas where we have design guidelines We have two other areas where we have design guidelines that are overlays for special areas. So I just wouldn't encourage taking one that was made for one purpose and transplanting it. And it does have guidelines, but it also has regulatory aspects. I think that you certainly could do a design overlay for something like a creek corridor. However, I know that we also want to do one for the downtown, so there might be some overlap there. But I really wouldn't encourage just taking one set of regulations for one part of town and using it in a different context. I think we would want to tailor it for that area.
Okay, we have a motion. Would the, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we'll send this back to committee. I think we have a lot of questions, a lot of interest in this whole topic, so we'll do it right.
I think that in order to bring something to committee, like a remapping, I'm not sure that we really got a good sense of what the new criteria would be, so. A working committee meeting.
Well, we might have to do it in more than one meeting, but I think there's enough discussion here that we're not ready to vote on it now. So that motion carried, and there's, I don't believe there's any further business, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.